But I'm sure I'll present that to you. But it says, "Whereas the City of Lafayette City Council is the governing and taxing authority of the City of Lafayette, empowered by law to levy and impose ad valorem taxes on all properties in the city, and it is necessary for the Lafayette City Parish Council, acting as the governing authority of the city, to levy..." And I'm trying to figure out, are you acting or you are? So I looked into the redistricting, and I realized that there was an election in 2010 that changed it, and it says, "Section 202 redistricting. The council by ordinance shall, if necessary, alter, change, or rearrange council/district boundaries so as to provide for population equality amongst districts as near as reasonably practical." It goes on to say, and I'm quoting the charter, "The procedure described above shall pertain and apply to the district boundaries for the city council of the city of Lafayette and/or the parish council for the parish of Lafayette, respectively." Now, if you are my city council, then why don't I have equal representation? And if you're acting as my city council, why don't I have equal representation according to the Home Rule Charter? What I found out was in the ballot of November 2, 2010, the summary that we read when we go read it, it says, "Pertain and apply to districts for the election of members of the city council of the city of Lafayette and the parish council." But in the body, it says "and/or" in the charter. So I'm still confused as to why I don't have taxation with equal representation, and I've asked you all about this. And I know there's a solution, but it's interesting because I came across this little Supreme Court ruling. First modern application of the Equal Protection Clause to voting laws came in Baker versus Carr in 1962, where the court ruled that the districts that sent representatives to the Tennessee State Legislature were so malappropriated, malappropriations, with some legislators representing 10 times the number of residents as the others, that they violated the Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution. Y'all remember this? Y'all gave me the number of voting people by district representing the city of Lafayette? Well, they were upset because they had... District 9 represents 6% registered city voters. District 6 represents 100% of the city voters. That is not taxation with equal representation, which my country was founded upon. And I believe you are obligated, and I know time is pressing, to fulfill that obligation to provide us residents, voters of the city of Lafayette, with taxation with equal representation. I look forward to working with you on that, if you'll ask me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Kong?
Andy, just one clarification. On the general alimony tax, that is a tax, a property tax, that was established by the state constitution. It was never voted on by the people, nor will it ever come up for renewal.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. I appreciate that.
Next speaker, please.
Teresa Roloff.
I live in the city of Scott. I'm a past utility employee, anyway. But I'm here again. I talked last month about buses. I want to say that I'm still interested in that, and that the students and the elderly are still looking forward to having that brought to the table for them. I noticed that y'all had two items that talk about buses, and that excites me. I'm sure it will them too, and eventually, we hope to get that hot shot that will take them to the hospitals and schools. I want to talk about something else that has to do with accessibility, and it's because I've lived here 17 years now, and I recall there being some accidents that we've had, actually fatalities, where people were trying to cross the street. I don't know all the circumstances as far as their condition, but I know that the areas where they were crossing, I still see people trying to make their way across the road. And coming from a bigger city, I was expecting to see some way that these people could get across, but that's never happened. One of these places is over by the Hilton Hotel on Pin Hook, and we had somebody who got struck down, probably going to one of the restaurants. And I have a question to y'all. Why haven't we put up a catwalk, something over or under, where people that are in areas where they're unable to get from one point to the other because of high traffic, that there's some solution to that? I found where, there was something written by an attorney, of course, somebody with Broussard and David, says, "Whether caused by low visibility, lack of sidewalks or crosswalks, driver negligence, or pedestrian negligence, pedestrian accidents occur with frightening regularity. In fact, almost 100,000 people each year are injured or killed in pedestrian accidents in the United States. And although pedestrian vehicle accidents are most common, our Lafayette pedestrian accident lawyer has realized that pedestrians can be injured while walking on poorly maintained sidewalks or on reasonably dangerous property." This deals with people with disabilities too. I mean, how are they going to get across? You know? I guess they could take Uber and get across the street. But it's really nice when you get to areas where they do have infrastructure, and I don't think even any has been considered to get from point A to point B when we're talking about just getting across a road. I've noticed too that sometimes our cities and things that we want to get to actually put some of the population on one side of the interstate, but the places they want to go on the other side, and if they don't have cars, that presents a problem too. And I'm wondering, well, why don't they have some place that's sectioned off so people can get over the interstate where they're not in a position where they might be hurt? And we've got some things in Scott that are due, that the city has to deal with, but y'all don't have to worry with that, but we got our problems with that too. Okay, and then, let me see. I'm glad to see the new meters that have gone in downtown. I'm excited about the solar panel that is being used downtown for some sort of a crosswalk by the library. Would love to see more of that. And something that wasn't mentioned here, you know, people are talking about solar panels being so expensive, everything, solar panels are becoming, and they talked about shade and that worry. Solar panels have become so efficient now that they can produce electricity in the shade. I talked or heard and talked to a very progressive architect who is part of a group that is all involved with environmental, and they are actually building skyscrapers that can produce all their own electricity. There are solar panels on each side of the building, whether they're facing the sun or not, and they also happen to have some sort of a wind tunnel in the middle way up high on this plan for the skyscraper. I think it's going to be in Poland. Anyway, also, fuel cells. There's been a huge deterrent as far as fuel cells, and you know, fuel cells are going to be something where people can do their own homes, they can power their own homes. The problem had to do with some sort of membrane in the life of that. They have made a hallmark progress at MIT research, so fuel cells would become more efficient and last longer. So with that, before we buy a really huge power plant, let's look at the technology. Let's not invest in something that's going to be obsolete too fast, and we'll be holding the bag, so to speak. And with that, I'm also going to mention that I'm part and support the, oh gosh, what do they call it? The public budget thing.
Yeah. Got them. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chair, the final speaker, Dr. Lashonda Green.
I'm here in support of the pharmacy benefit information that you guys have heard earlier from a couple other speakers, and I'm here as a local pharmacist that is a pharmacy owner here in the city of Lafayette. So this is really important to me to have you guys understand and want to review the process to help save our community money. I open my pharmacy not just for me, but for our community. We need to save money in our community to put it elsewhere so that we can see other things happen for the city of Lafayette. My pharmacy is here on Willow, so we definitely want to see things flourish and have some things happen for the city. Now, we're not here saying, "Oh, Lord, the poor pharmacists, they're not making money." They're coming here to say, "That's really not at all, guys, what this proposal and what this review is about." We just want to educate you guys on what the PBMs have been doing, the kind of smoke-in-the-mirror effect that you need to know, because it's stuff that's behind all of the information that you just don't know, that we see every day. Now, we know we're hearing that the current PBM that you guys have, they're going to be saving you money. Well, one way they're saving the money is they're not paying the pharmacists for brand drugs. We're actually losing money. So how can we help our local community if we're losing money? We can't service the community, which is why I'm a pharmacist, and I'm sure the other pharmacists that have talked, we're here for that purpose. So one way that they're saving the money is by taking it away from the people that are actually the faces that you guys and other people in the community see daily. So we just want to give you that information to let you know kind of what's going on and to give you other options out there to definitely save you money. Now, us as pharmacists, we've addressed this issue on multiple levels, not just here, and we just want to let you guys know about their practices. And for me, speaking locally as a pharmacist and pharmacy owner that took a big leap to open a pharmacy, because it's not an easy thing to do, and adding this to the pot of it makes it even more difficult for me to do what I wake up every morning and walk into my pharmacy and open the doors to do. So I just want to urge you guys as a local person to take this process into consideration and the review, and listen and hear it out, because it really means a big deal to us as pharmacists to make sure that we take care of our community. Thanks so much for hearing us. My part was short, but it's just straight to the point. We want to save money for our community, and we want to be able to be here to do what we are here to do as pharmacists. Thank you.
Thank you.
She was the final speaker.
Thank you very much. We're going to now move to ordinances for final adoption. Again, this is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule is in effect. Erin, could you please read item number seven?
Ordinance 127, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council, authorizing Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to sell three surplus Medtronic Life Pack 1000 AEDs, which are no longer needed for public purposes, to Physio Control Incorporated for a total bid price of $1,200, as per the attached list.
Motion by Bellard, second by Nakken. Again, I know we have an amendment on this item, and it is proposed to clarify language to reflect that the damage AEDs will be disposed of and not sold. So I would certainly appreciate a motion and a second on that amendment. Bellard motions the amendment, and Nakken seconds that as well. We will now open up the floor for council discussion. There's no council discussion on the amendment. Are there any blue cards signed in for this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's call the vote on the amendment, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Okay, are there any council discussion as the ordinance, as it has been amended? There is not any blue cards? Please call the vote on the ordinance as amended.
District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
Ordinance 151, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council, declaring the building or structure located at 312 Sunny Street, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Tracy Lee Duyon and Terri Jean Duyon, care of Gerald J. Block, attorney appointed, to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of same.
Motion by Bellard, second by Nakken. Council discussion? There is not any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, item number nine has been deferred until the September 19 council meeting. We're going to move to item number 10, please.
Ordinance 155, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $104,241 from capital work orders within the Lafayette Fire Department and appropriating to bunker gear for additional funding needed.
Motion by Kong, second by Bellard. Council discussion? There is not any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, item number nine has been deferred until the September 19 council meeting. We're going to move to item number 10, please.
Ordinance 155, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the transfer of $104,050 in home investment partnership funds within the Community Development Department from contract construction costs to Lafayette Habitat for Humanity.
Motion by Kong, second by Nakken. Council discussion? Seeing none on any blue cards?
We did have one person signing, Melinda Taylor, in support of home funding for Habitat for Humanity. She did not wish to speak.
Thank you very much. Please call the vote.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Ordinance 158, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council, authorizing the filing of an application with the Louisiana Housing Corporation for a grant under the 2017-19 Emergency Solutions Grant Program.
Motion by Cook. Can I get a second? Second by Kong. Council discussion? There is not any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
It's called the vote.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Ordinance 158, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council, authorizing the filing of an application with the Louisiana Housing Corporation for a grant under the 2017-19 Emergency Solutions Grant Program.
Motion by Cook. Can I get a second? Second by Kong. Council discussion? There is not any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
It's called the vote.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Ordinance 160, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the receipt of $17,500 in strategies to empower people funds from the Louisiana Workforce Commission through St. Landry Parish Government, Local Workforce Development Board Number 40, for a three-month period and appropriating revenues within the Community Development Department Workforce Development Division budget.
Motion by Nakken, second by... Castile or Lewis? Lewis. All right, council discussion? There is not any blue cards on this matter?
We do have one blue card. My apologies.
Good evening, Mayor Rubedo, Councilman, and all the people here. My name is Ravi, and I'm the owner of, one of the part owners of the Charles Mouton House, which is located in the Sterling Grove neighborhood.
Sir, I think you're on the wrong item. You won item too fast.
He had, but he had number 15, ordinance 160, so I double-checked it to make sure. But yeah, his, his address did say Sterling, so behold you over.
Thank you.
But just to be clear, this item here is not of any importance to you? Okay, thank you very much. We really, you know, public record checks and all of that stuff, we do pretty good with that, despite what may have been said earlier. But we respond pretty good.
No other speakers, sir?
All right, thank you very much. You can call the vote on this one.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
To adopt is approved.
Ordinance 162, 2017.
And just for the record, Councilman William Terrio is having issues with his voting system. So it's not that he's not voting for the public, the viewing public, he's having issues with his monitor. We're calling in IT.
He broke it, huh?
Ordinance 162, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council, approving a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of a bed and breakfast into the existing main house in a residential single-family zoning district, case number ZON 2017-24338 North Sterling Street, conditional use permit located generally on the corner east of North Sterling and south of Mud Avenue.
Motion by Nakken, second by Kong. Council discussion? Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On this particular item here, a lot of things have been going on. I've been reaching out, and my constituent had been reaching out to me from the Sterling Grove neighborhood. I think a few of them are here now, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to let you guys know the council, my fellow council members, what had been going on, why they were asking me to deny this approval. And I also would like to bring up Mr. Jim Parker, when time is allowed, so he can explain to us where the, where the gentleman is not in compliance. So I'll leave it there, and I'd like to let some of the constituent of Sterling Grove come up and say a few words, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Parker after that, if it's okay, Mr. Council, Mr. Chairman.
What we'll do, Mr. Lewis, is we'll see if any other council members have any discussion on this, then we'll go to our blue cards. As our policy states, for anyone who wished to speak, we'll acknowledge all of those blue cards, and then if there's any information requested from the department, that could be done at that time.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, any other council discussion? There is not any blue cards?
Yes, sir, we do have blue cards.
Thank you.
First speaker, JW Barrios? Barus?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Mayor Rubedo, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address my concerns regarding this pending variance submitted by Boadishan at 338 North Sterling. My name is Bill Barwa. My wife and I have lived at 411 North Sterling for 44 years, directly across the street from the Bed and Breakfast. We don't have a problem with the Bed and Breakfast. A bed and breakfast run properly, successful, and popular is only an asset for our neighborhood. It'll support the unique, it'll bring attention to the uniqueness of our neighborhood. It'll support our property values, and it'll also reinforce the single-family residential model that we are striving to maintain. I think that the concerns that we have, again, are not with the Bed and Breakfast, but the fact that it's not being operated in compliance with the existing codes and articles that exist in Section 8 of the Housing, the Housing Code. We also feel that zoning, the zoning and planning commission erred in their decision to approve of this variance. They failed in determining that the Bed and Breakfast was being operated in accordance and passed it on to you for final approval. I want to relate one other story about zoning going terribly wrong. The property is at 306 Mud Ave-, uh, 603 Mud Avenue. Now, the gentleman that lived there was incapacitated, was in a wheelchair. He requested variance from a single-family residential to light commercial. He built, we, no one in the neighborhood objected to it for humanitarian purposes. He built his building. And sometime after he passed away, his wife decided to convert the building into a two-apartment unit building. One for our grandson and one for our daughter who lived out of town. Shortly thereafter, it was sold, and sold again. The current owner has applied for a building permit, not has applied, applied for and received a building permit, broke the, broke the, the home up into a duplex, and we now have a four-unit apartment on the site. Totally out of character with everything else in the neighborhood. It's poorly maintained. And to be quite honest, it's facetiously referred to as a duck camp, because it was the finest example of a Victorian home being turned into a duck camp. This is what we worry, this is what we're worried about. Zonage, zoning slippage. Getting to the point in question tonight. In Section 8, by definition, a bed and breakfast must function primarily as a residence. The operation of the bed and breakfast is secondary to that as a bed and breakfast, to that as a residence. The owner-operator must live in the primary structure. Okay? That's the first tenet. Secondly, by definition, a bed and breakfast can have no more than five guest rooms. The main house has four. Okay, the carriage house has three. Math is simple. He's out of compliance on those first two issues. We also understand that he's been advertising an Airbnb, which is certainly fine. You know, but what's happening is he's ending up with overbooking. He's ending up having to put his guests, house his guests in another structure down the street. And to be quite honest, we're concerned that with the operator not living in the structure, with the excess number of rooms, and with the marketing as it's taking place, that we're seeing a conversion, a slow slippage from a bed and breakfast to a small boutique hotel. This is the oldest continuous, continuously inhabited resident in the city of Lafayette, the parish of Lafayette, and all of Acadia. This has to be handled properly. It is the mainstay of the historic area. If this place does slide into the category of a bed, of a, a, a small hotel, it's gonna kill us. It's gonna hurt us. This is not good. We are requesting that you guys look into the drafting of an ordinance that would protect the historic district and all the properties therein. It would regulate building and reconstruction and changing the face of these properties. And we ask that you look at the role and function of the Historic Preservation Committee and the Alliance for Historic Preservation, because currently, they're giving us no help whatsoever. I ask that you review this process, this, this variance, and that you reject it. Thank you.
Your time is up. The reference to 603 Mud Avenue, that's not the same property. You was just giving an example of a, of a bad situation? 603, that's not, that's different? Of what happened? Okay. Okay. Next speaker?
Francis Handy.
Hello. My name is Francis Handy.
You could pull that mic down if you'd like a little bit, Miss.
All right. My name is Francis Handy. My husband and I live at 120 St. Charles in Nickerson subdivision, south of Jefferson Street. We've been in Nickerson for 14 years. And so I'm here to address this Boadishan noncompliance. The general regulation of the Lafayette zoning ordinance of January 2012, Section 8, Bed and Breakfast Facilities, Article 8, Article Number 4, A5, states that the structure shall comply with fire, health, and building codes, as well as all applicable city ordinances and regulations. A6 states that the only exterior indication of the bed and breakfast facility shall be a flat, non-illuminated sign of one square foot in the area. The sign shall be attached to the building. The planning, we feel that the planning and zoning board perhaps made a mistake by passing down this variance request to the city council when so many regulations are out of compliance at the Boadishan Bed and Breakfast. Consequently, we feel that the council can write this by rejecting this request and obliging the absentee out-of-state owners and Mr. Ravi Dagula to comply with Lafayette City planning and zoning regulations prior to asking for the variance. Once Mr. Ravi Dagula and his out-of-state owners of Boadishan Bed and Breakfast are fully in compliance, only at that time should it be permitted to submit a new variance request for the planning and the zoning commission. And in closing, it's just that when everyone does not follow the regulations of the city government, it leaves residents feeling very vulnerable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bernard Robichaud.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Robidoux. My name is Bernard Robichaud. I reside at 328 Elizabeth Avenue. I'm here to bring to your attention issues in Sterling Grove as it pertains to the noncompliance issues with the, the bed and breakfast operating basically in a commercial capacity in the, the, the district of Sterling Grove. It states in, in, excuse me, one second. "The board in zoning adjustment may require additional information in order to make a decision as such requested information shall be provided prior to board of zoning adjustment and approval." It is my understanding that Mr. Parker has provided some information to the board in an effort to make this recommendation to go to the next level. We would like to be aware of what his recommendations are, either to ask him on record before this was ever, ever allowed to come to city council, and now that it, it's my understanding that he made a visit today, could we be brought into light as to what his recommendation is pertaining to being in compliance to ask for this recommendation? We would also bring to the, the council's attention that this is a, a bed and breakfast that is skating rules and regulations associated with Airbnb bed and breakfasts, but in fact, operating as a commercial facility which should be governed by commercial guidelines set forth by the council in an effort to protect the historic nature of this neighborhood and the constituents therein. Thank you for your time, counsel.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jennifer Kansas.
Hi, Jennifer Kansas.
Are back in y'all home yet? Are y'all, are y'all still in the house? Okay, I saw the tree damage.
Oh.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
It's a little tornado.
Yeah.
But it's getting cleared up, and the city's been great, LUS, and we're, we're getting it done.
Great.
Thank you, though.
You're welcome.
Um, as Mr. Boudreau just stated, I own a home at 207 St. Charles, which is in Nickerson subdivision, which is also a part of the Sterling Grove Neighborhood Association. General Regulation of the Lafayette Zoning Ordinance of January 2012, Section 8, Bed and Breakfast Facilities, Article Number 4B1, which states, "The applicant shall submit an official application to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, including all supportive documentation and information. No application shall be considered unless all requirements of ordinance O-191, Article 8, have been satisfied in a timely manner, and such application shall be subject to the same procedures and rules which are normally applicable to appeals and requests for variances thereunder." In this case, many things are out of compliance or incomplete, and the board should have rejected this request. The planning and zoning board may have made a mistake by passing this variance request to the city council when so many regulations are out of compliance at Boadishan Bed and Breakfast. I respectfully request the council to oppose ordinance 162, 2017 at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Rita Patte, Patte, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. As stated, I'm Rita Patte, and I, I am here to address this item, number 16, regarding the additional variance for the bed and breakfast located at 4, at 338 North Sterling. On 7/17, about a month ago, in spite of almost one-half of the criteria and conditions required for compliance, eight out of 19 were not in compliance. And this conditional variance was granted. To date, the conditions and criteria have not been met 100% as I understand. Article B5 states that all criteria and conditions must be met in order for a bed and breakfast to operate legally. At the time the variance was granted, the following criteria were not met. A4, A2, A5, A6, A7, A9, B4, B5, and C3. I am specifically calling your attention to B5, which states that according to the commission's own rules and regulations, which state, "The applicant must comply with all conditions or requirements of the Board of Zoning and Adjustment in order to continue operation. Noncompliance may result in revocation of all permits and license." Therefore, I'm requesting that you vote against this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Olivier Chatlin-Dipavail.
Yes, hello again. And here in this case, we have, I wanted to bring another regulation that is out of compliance. It says that general, according to the general regulation of the Lafayette zoning ordinance of January 2012, Section 8, Bed and Breakfast Facilities, Article Number 4C3, it says that in approving any bed and breakfast facility, "The Board of Zoning Adjustment shall prescribe any conditions that it deems to be necessary or desirable." The Board of Zoning Adjustment shall also determine that, and for number three, it is, "The approval of the bed and breakfast facility will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare." In this case, a mistake was done. It was brought to you when it should have been repealed at the zoning commission. As a matter of fact, at the zoning commission, there were so many things out of compliance, and when the things were questioned, there's an officer of the law on this board, and that officer of the law didn't vote for it because he knew that there was inconsistency in the, in the answer that were given regarding this. The place we're dealing with here is not a bed and breakfast. It is a hotel. It currently has three rooms that have received permits in the carriage house under a bed and breakfast stipulation. There are four rooms in the main house, and this is what this variance is requesting for, four rooms. Well, the owner of the property is supposed to be living on the property. Mr. Ravi Dagula is not the owner of this place. He is the manager of this place. This place is owned by a limited liability corporation, and the owner lives out of state. What we're dealing with is a pure hotel operation. By giving these four rooms extra as a variance, we are going to enter this, a situation where it's not just four room, we're at seven now. In the back, there's a garage that's currently being refurbished that could, I think, hold two or four rooms in there, too. There is two acres attached to it on Moss Street with a house on it that is also another unit that is currently rented. Pretty much, you have a commercial operation in this historical home in our neighborhood that is nothing else than a hotel. Also, we have to take into consideration that with what is happening currently, the numbers are, are being brought up for this business with the intent of resale. When that intent of resale is gonna be done, this intent of resale is to be resold to large hotel corporation. I am asking, following this thing, that it's a hotel in disguise, and thus, I am asking that you vote nay on this request and that you, according to the stipulation of the general regulation of the Lafayette zoning, you revoke the existing permits until the whole place comes into compliance as a bed and breakfast, because you're not gonna be benefiting from this. This hotel is not a hotel. It's like, you know, you're not, you're not getting taxes like regular hotel. Also, on the fact that there is a need for more room for profit and for revenues, just be informed that the Boutique Hotel downtown, the Juliette, is also entertained for purchase by Mr. Ravi Dagula, who is a representative for large corporation. It is not his own financing. It's financing coming from out of state. Thank you.
Thank you. Carly, before we go to the next speaker, hold on one second. Carly, could you come see for a second, please?
Yes, sir.
The, the facility that is being spoken of?
Yes, sir.
Is this on the corner of Sterling and Mud Avenue, the old Kenny Boyne House?
Yes, sir.
With the, with the overlooking balcony?
Yes.
Okay, I spent a lot of time as a child. There was a reference just now, the last speaker mentions, he quoted a 2012. And a lot of issues have been brought forward as far as being out of compliance and out of codes. And I know we have the UDC.
Yes, sir.
Is this information that is being talked about tonight being referenced in the right codes? And was this addressed at the planning and zoning hearing to be assured that what code was actually being dealt with?
The 2012 code did not come up at the zoning commission hearing, so I don't, I'm not familiar, I haven't looked at that. We've been regulating from the UDC, which was adopted in 2015, which speaks to bed and breakfast as a conditional use permit and something that is under the purview of the zoning commission, followed by the city parish council. I, I believe, and Jim could probably speak to it better because he has the history. I believe prior to the UDC, bed and breakfasts were enabled by BOZA, and that is the difference.
So now, so the difference that you just referenced is rather than BOZA doing zoning adjustments, a bed and breakfast is required to go to the planning commission, then come to the council?
That is correct.
Okay. And, and I guess, and I'll wait till Jim come up after we finish our speakers, but one thing is, this council is gonna need to know with these regulation issues and out of compliance issues.
Yes, sir.
I need, we're gonna need to know if that's factual as it relates to the codes of today that the permits was granted under.
And I believe Jim is prepared to speak about that tonight. He was on the property this morning.
Okay, all right. Okay, I just wanted to get a, a, make sure I was dealing with the right location.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Ravi Dagula.
Good evening, Mayor Robidoux, councilmen, and all the people present here. My name is Ravi, and I'm the owner, not the representative of.
Did you pick the mic? Thank you.
And I, I don't care to address all those things that other people have done, but I will represent me. I'll tell you what we do in this house. We, we bought this house, which is built in 1820. House was in disrepair. It was on sale for six years.
Talk into the mic, sir.
It's, it's been for sale for six years. I bought this house, which is, which is in complete disrepair. I spent last eight months, about 18 hours a day, to restore it to the, to the value. If you go by the property today and you inspect the place, you will see how much time I had spent restoring this heritage that you all, that, I'm not from here. I did this to preserve this culture. I did this to preserve this culture. I did this to preserve that house. I mean, the house needed to be preserved, and I did it. And during the process of renovation, when I am sanding the floors, I could not take the dust, and I had temporary arrangements to live at an apartment so I can restore it the right way. When the planning and zoning had told me about that, that it need to be owner occupied, I moved back into the place. Well, that is one part of the thing. If you go today to that property, and you can tell me, you cannot point one thing that I didn't do, that I spent my own money doing, restoring it completely to its value. And I did this for Lafayette, and I always thought, I had a talk with Mayor Robidoux, and I said, this is my plans, and this is what I want to do. And you're welcome to bring any diplomats or anybody that comes to Lafayette, you're welcome to bring to my house and show the house. That's what I did. Okay, well, next point. I employ five or six families that live, that depend on me. This is not about zoning and a sign of one square foot that I need to put, that is not about that, their livelihood, I provide livelihood to them. I think that is more important. If I had any compliance, or if I had went against any compliance, that is a whole issue. But I look at it like I am doing something for the society, and I need to be, and I need to be addressed that way, and which I think you should be. Well, I did, I spent considerable, considerable amount of time trying to talk to a lot of renovation people, architecture schools from Nakadish, from Lafayette, Eddie Casio, who is the head of architecture department in Lafayette. I talked to a lot of people and see what's the right way to restore it. And I did temporarily move out of the house because I couldn't take the dust when I am sanding the floors. And when the planning and zoning had let me know about it, I moved back into the, into the house, and I'm okay with it. As far as, this is an old house, and I, and if you all have an old house or historic property, you would know that old houses have problems. If I don't increase the revenue of the place, how can it self-sustain? It doesn't matter if I have the money or my partners have the money. How would it self-sustain if it doesn't make enough money? Not only that, I mean, the property is full of historic value, and I tried my best to restore it. And not only, we have people from all over Europe, all over the states of America, come in, and when they leave this place, they leave thinking that they know a little piece of Cajun culture or Creole culture, because we have people who teach Creole and Cajun culture, we have people who play Cajun music, we have people who tell them what to do, go to restaurants, eat, go to Vermillion Village, Acadian Village, every island, you name it, all restaurants, to dance, to do everything they need to do, so they can know a part of Lafayette. And that's what I created here. And I think I need the support from the councilmen so I can take my work forward, so I can, I mean, this is, I want people to have a lasting experience when they come to Lafayette, knowing that they know a little bit about culture. I can, I can name hundreds of people from thirty different countries, Germany, Italy, Switzerland, I mean, of course, France, Quebec, I mean, Canada, everywhere, they come, and when I, when they leave, and I ask them, hey, how was your experience? They said, we never knew Lafayette has so many things to do. And that's what I created. And I would like for you all to support me. If I have done something without my knowledge, I'm ready to, I'm ready to make changes. And when I moved into the neighborhood, I asked Sterling Grove, open arms, come in, and have, they had some kind of gathering or a festival. I opened, I opened my doors, and I said, come and do whatever you need to do. This is for you all. And they did. I don't know what the opposition is coming from, but councilman, I'm, I'm doing what Lafayette needs, that I think it needs. I consulted with Mayor Robidoux, and I would like for you to think before you work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Christopher Charplan.
Hi, my name is Christopher Charplan, mayor, councilpeople. So, four two seven North Sterling, building A, B, C, and D, four four nine North Sterling, six thirty one Semco, and three ten North Sterling where I currently live. Man, I moved here about six years ago, and boy, was it cool. It was just cool, that whole neighborhood, so cool. So, I bought four two seven North Sterling, I lived there for a while, I redid it, it's the old De La Housse place, it's really cool. I had ten brothers come by, tell me stories, I listened, and I learned. And then, I moved across town, and three ten North Sterling, the John Nickerson Shapwe Place, some people might be familiar with that. I just could not pass up. It was, once again, oh my God, it's so cool. And my wife back there, we were walking one day with a dog before we had bought it, and we looked up, and she said, wouldn't it be cool to live there one day? I said, yeah, it would be cool if we could live in a nice house like that. I'm not sure that'll ever happen, but that'd be pretty cool. Well, about three years later, when it came up for sale, because it'd been on the market for three years, I was fortunate enough to purchase that property, and I've been restoring it ever since, and I live there currently. And then, four two seven North Sterling, I still own, four four nine North Sterling, I have a beautiful Victorian and two other properties, and I was just absolutely fortunate, a New Orleans couple came, and they approached my wife, who worked for Van Eaton at the time, and they said, look, we've been looking for a house, and I'm not kidding, they've been looking for four years, and they couldn't find anything. And so, what they did is approached me and said, look, can we buy this and restore it? And I made sure, I asked them how they wanted to restore it and what they were going to do. I didn't just say, okay, how much, because I care. And then they bought it, and if you guys hadn't been there, go check it out, because they did a superb job, and they are going to live in that neighborhood and make our neighborhood better. I absolutely love this neighborhood. The only objection I have right now is unfortunately, the Sterling Grove Neighborhood Association has been created without a vote, without representation. I only tell everybody right now that that group does not, is not my voice. My voice is my voice, and other individual citizens are their voices. And my voice right now, when I found out somebody bought the Butisian, I was excited, to say the least, because it's on my block. And then I found out Ravi bought it. Come to find out, I'd met this guy about eight years before in college, I went to UL, and I went over and talked to him about what he was going to do, and I just was like, I think it's a great idea. I think everybody's going to be on board, I don't see a problem. I've hosted historic preservation walks at my home, I've had a lot of these people come by, and I can understand the concerns, I mean, it makes sense. But in the end, I think that it'll all work itself out in spite of a lot of the opposition. I think it's just misunderstood. I'm in construction, I'm also in the hotel business up north, and so, I kind of know a little bit about, you know, that hotel motel taxis talking about. It's no fun. But I do want to just say that, again, the SGNA, I appreciate the effort to make the Sterling Grove Neighborhood Association a group. I'm not against it in the future, but right now, my voice is my voice. I own a bit of property there, I like the neighborhood. I think what he's doing is trying to put money into something good and make it better for the community, and I just simply ask that you let him. So, thank you, guys.
Next speaker, please.
Final speaker, Elizabeth Viera.
I think it's safe to say I'm a little in over my head and the youngest one here, but I do currently rent at the, at two thirty five Moss Street behind the bed and breakfast in question. I've been around there, I've been renting for two years, and before Ravi started renovations, we called it the jungle. I wouldn't consider myself safe walking even to the bed and breakfast, and to say that he's improved it is an understatement. I can't speak for the Historic Grove, the Sterling Historic Grove Association, other than to say that my grandmother grew up on Sterling, and that she was with me today in favor of allowing at least further, further progress with the bed and breakfast. And no, he was not in compliance before, but I believe that allowing him to continue to take steps to be in compliance is only in the interest of the neighborhood, and I guess economically, it doesn't make sense to keep doing what we've always been doing and expect different results. If we want to see Sterling Historic Grove, you know, become everything that maybe we say it is, coming, I'm coming from someone my age and moving into the area, I didn't feel the community maybe coming together in the way that they feel that they are together. And so, I've felt most involved with the community with the renovations and the improvements of the bed and breakfast, and I, you know, can't speak to the, to the ordinances and speak in the code that you all speak in, but I will say, I will say, I think it's an important economic advancement for the community and for downtown. I plan on staying here, so all of this is, is really good to hear that we're trying to make it better. So, thanks.
Thank you. Is that the final speaker? Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bring up Jim Parker, please.
Sir?
Yes, sir. Today you made a site visit on the properties in question, correct?
Yes, sir.
And your findings, did you find anything that Mr., the gentleman that would like to open up as a bed and breakfast in compliance, or he was out of compliance, in your opinion?
It was mentioned earlier, he's got a couple of signs that don't meet code. That's probably pretty easily fixed, I think. I walked through all three floors and saw the five bedrooms in the main house. Mr. Ravi showed me one that he identified as his personal bedroom, opened the closets and showed me everything. There were no clothes in the closet, but he said he lives there. We went to, through the carriage house, there were the three rooms in there that were previously approved and are part of this approval, is a kind of a reapproval. And I went through the garage in the back, and there was a room there that, you've got to figure someone spent the night there that night before or very recently. So, the room count might be a little off. I believe the ordinance prohibits cooking in the rooms. There were microwaves in some rooms, I don't know if that really means cooking or not, but that's the gist of what I saw this morning.
And it was today, you did this site through, correct? And you did talk with Mr. Ravi today as well?
Showed me around, yes.
He showed you around, okay. So, as far as councilpeople, council members, and myself, I think it's our obligation to not approve this, to deny this, because he's not in compliance. So, if anyone else has any question, I'd be more than happy to speak to Mr. Jim or not.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Jim, so in, in clear terms.
Yes, sir.
Is the gentleman who represented himself at that mic as the owner of the property living on the property?
He showed me, he identified a room.
I heard you say he was living.
Said it was his bedroom, there were no clothes hanging in the closet that he showed me.
And obviously, you're not really in a position to really investigate if someone's living without, I guess, seeing where they sleeping and all of that, right?
There, on his bed, there was a card that was on some of the other beds that invited guests, provided information to guests. That card was on his bed. Just saw that.
So, that would probably be a no. Okay, the number of rooms that is allowed in a bed and breakfast is maximum of how many?
You determine that.
We do, so it's not a limitation on that under the codes that we operate?
Correct. The previous approval was for three bedrooms, three rooms in the carriage house. This request was for four bedrooms in the main house, for a total of seven, because there's five bedrooms in the main house.
Right.
And the owner proprietor, the owner has to live in the house. The idea of a bed and breakfast is that it's secondary or accessory to the primary use of this being your home.
Right.
So, he could only show me four bedrooms that would be used for the B and B. So, the ordinance before you says a maximum of seven rooms could be rented as part of this bed and breakfast.
Okay, so the maximum is determined by what is proposed, not what we restrict as the UDC speaks. There's no restriction.
UDC?
Early in the conversation, I think I heard someone allude to the fact that you could only have X number in a bed and breakfast, and now, this four plus three makes seven, do the math that exceeds that number. So, that's what I'm trying to get clarity on, that number. Is that in excess of the maximum number allowed, or is that number approvable?
UDC does not state the number of rooms that are available in a bed and breakfast. An applicant would come to us saying, I want to do this, it would be reviewed, the zoning commission acts on it, makes a recommendation to you, and then you would have the final say as the number of bedrooms. The UDC itself does not say you must provide a maximum of, or you may have a maximum of this. He came to us with a five-bedroom house and a three-bedroom carriage house, and had to live in one of the bedrooms of the eight, so that leaves seven, and that's what's before you.
Okay, if, if this was to pass, and he was fine to be in noncompliance, let's say it was discovered that he was not living there, is there authority within the department to shut that down? To do a cease and desist or a permit pull?
On the spot, probably not. A cease and desist order is usually used for little tougher violations. We would send him a notice saying, hey, it looks like you're in violation. We would try to get him into viola, into compliance, because that's what we want to do, we're not interested in taking people to court, we're interested in things to work out. And if it didn't work out, then we would take him to court and let him tell the judge why.
Okay, so, the question I asked Carly earlier, as far as the application of the code, there were a number of issues brought forward that says noncompliance, out of compliance, out of compliance, noncompliance. One reference was to two thousand and twelve, the UDC was adopted in two thousand and fifteen. Of those issues that have been brought forward, can you give us an appreciation of, I heard you say signs, can you give us an appreciation of what is out of compliance related to your inspection today?
The ordinance before you is, today, before this ordinance passes, pretty much the signs and the, the main house is not approved for a bed and breakfast. If he's using the main house for a bed and breakfast, that's a violation of the current standard, the current approval. He's not allowed to use the garage as a bed and breakfast, or rent that room out. The only bed and breakfast rooms allowed on the site are the three.
In the carriage.
The carriage house, which is kind of the middle house, main house, carriage house, garage.
Very familiar.
So, today, before this happens, if he's renting rooms in the main house for the bed and breakfast, that's a violation. The signs, of course. I'm not aware of any other.
So, current renting in the main house, and the signs out in the lawn areas are out of compliance?
If he's renting rooms in the main house?
If he's renting rooms, that would be a violation more than out of, he's violating the code, but as far as compliance with the code, it's the makeup of his signs.
Yes, sir.
That's it, nothing else? That you was able to determine, of course?
I thought I was able to determine.
And my last question before we go to our next council member to speak, and this may be legal, and it looked like you have the responsibility for PZ, for zoning tonight. The councils, if this becomes a real contingency on compliance, does this council have the ability to defer this item until such time that all compliance is met, or if all compliance is met, when it returns, the option to deny can still be available to us? And I'm, let me put your mic on. Is that Scott?
Yeah, and let me do this, too. I brought my attorney Shapwe, who does the PZD.
I didn't see him, he hiding back there. I apologize. That's why I thought you was handling it, I apologize. I didn't realize that the in-house attorney was here, but yes, certainly. John, could you come up? I'm sorry, John, I didn't see you back there. We might have to find a spot for attorneys. Right behind the media. Did you catch my question?
Yes. Just by way of background, because there was some misapprehension by the, some of the folks that spoke, they spoke of BOZA regulations, which are no longer active. The provisions for bed and breakfast are actually laid out in detail in section eighty-nine seventy-seven of the UDC. So, what happened at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, they looked at all of these particular provisions and determined that the individual who was applying for the conditional use permit, and that's what we're talking about tonight, conditional use permit, had to meet all of these in order to comply with the UDC. That was agreed upon, and it was voted in favor of the conditional use permit by a vote of six to one. Now, it comes to you as a recommendation. So, it occurs to me that if you should pass this tonight, or approve it, then, at that point in time, the gentleman would understand that he had to be in compliance with every particular aspect of the ordinance in order to continue. And if he did not, then he would be subject to a cease and desist order. Ultimately, I would argue that his conditional use permit, conditional use being the optimum phrase here, could be revoked. Now, your specific question was, can you defer it? And I believe the answer is yes, you can. You can. It may be up to ninety days, I'd have to look at that, but you are within a specific time period, you are well within your rights to defer this pending, you know, further pending, you know, a further discussion with him and, uh, something that he could bring to you to, uh, give you some comfort that he is going to comply with everything that the recommendation, uh, lays out.
Right, so, so compliance in, in, for the life of me, I never understand. I know this isn't anybody doing in this room. But I don't know why compliance isn't done before the vote, why we would vote and then hope that they comply and then undo what was done. But we could fix that with a possible deferment if this council so chooses. What, what I'm afraid of, what has happened is that these residents with concerns for their community was basing everything on codes that don't apply. And that, that concerns me, because now this person who owns and have invested has actually complied according to codes that we passed right here. So certainly, to, to not honor that would be a problem. So-
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to be clear that was within our authority, because going forward, there could be a win-win on both sides, because I heard a lot of people say they liked the home, obviously. The gentleman, I think he stayed next to the lawn house if I remember correctly. But it's, it's the activity and the compliance issues, so I think we could hold them to that if we wanted to defer. But he has, I wanted to make sure that we understood what rules and codes he was operating under and for the residents who have spoken to realize that unfortunately, their own codes were being applied.
Yeah, specifically if you look at the provisions of eighty-nine seventy-seven of the UDC, and perhaps the, uh, the audience can do that. Everything that was laid out is in the order, ordinance that you see before. The only thing that was done, sort of customizing it, was the issue of the seven, uh, particular bedrooms, as I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Conk?
Mr. Budro touched on a number of issues that I wanted to pursue. We are being requested tonight to approve conditional rezoning for this particular property. If we were to approve it, at what point would the property owner be allowed to put into place a bed and breakfast? Would he have to have complete compliance prior to opening a bed and breakfast?
I think he would, yes.
So in terms of the issues of compliance, as of today, it really is not a factor in this conversation. It's as we move forward, if we gave him the conditional rezoning, correct?
As this recommendation comes to you, that's the way I see it. It would be sort of like a, a certificate of occupancy, you know? In other words, before the permit is actually put into place, yes, he'd have to come into compliance.
So all of those issues that are outlined for a bed and breakfast would have to be noted prior to a CO?
Correct.
All right. The concern that I have was a comment made earlier, and I'd like some clarification on it, is if this person, whomever, got the CO for a bed and breakfast and was found to be in non-compliance, for example, he was not living on the property. What are the consequences? I heard a cease and desist order. What is the time factor involved in doing a cease and desist? What is the hearing process? How long can that person operate in violation of the criteria?
It can go on for a while.
That's what concerns me.
Because it is a, uh, legal process that goes to the local court system. And when you have a local court system involved, yes, it can, it can take, uh, at least a number of months.
Couple of other points made tonight, and, and Mr. Budro really touched on the Boza issue. To me, that's not a factor and that's been confirmed in his, in his, uh, comments and his questions. There were a couple of other comments made about, uh, the fact that the intent of the property owner is to eventually convert it into a hotel. If the conditional rezoning is granted, doesn't the criteria in place carry over in a title transfer?
Yes, that's my appreciation. It follows the property.
So he couldn't arbitrarily sell it to another corporation who would then decide they wanted to use a hotel? They would have to con, conform with whatever's in place at that time?
Some big shot in the corporation better live there, otherwise, no.
My inclination is to, is to suggest a deferral. However, I will say this, is that if we don't defer tonight, I'm going to vote for the conditional rezoning. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Robidoux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the, back in the back tab, at the zoning staff recommendation that was written. And I just, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what's changed since PZD made the recommendation to approve the conditional use. I mean, it talks about, um, that it was operated as a bed and breakfast for over thirty years. I think both the carriage and the main house when Mr. Voorhees lived there. Um, there never seemed to be an issue at that time, whether it was permitted or, or allowed, I don't really know. Um, but that's, that's, was in place and now that, and of course, I've visited the property with Mr. Voorhees over the course of the last six years and it was in a state of disrepair, which is why he had it up for sale for six years and and I've gone to see it recently and the amount of work that's been put into that property is remarkable. And it is restoring it, you know, back to the character that we want. And that's long since been a goal, as is stated in PZD's recommendation of LCG, to get these properties back into, um, the, the way that, that we all remember them and we want them to be, which is why they're on the, the historic registry. So I would ask Jim, I mean, has anything changed since the, the PZD recommendation that the conditional use be approved? Is there anything new from your visit today or from additional conversations since this-